The City Council Committee on Ordinances, Licenses and Legal Affairs co-posted with the Committee of the Whole. We'll meet remotely on Wednesday, May 4th, 2022 at 6:00 PM for the purposes of discussing zoning ordinances relative to green infrastructure and zoning section 6.8 visibility at intersections of Chapter 6 via remote participation in accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and as amended by Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022. The subcommittee meetings are held to take action for the purposes of making recommendations to the full council. Individuals may participate remotely in the meeting via a remote participation platform called Zoom. Members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting may access the remote participation meeting through any one of the following ways. Go to zoom.us.com to join the webinar, enter webinar ID 88061025019, password 138074, or via telephone 877-853-5257, and enter the same webinar ID and password. As requested, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, matters not requiring a public hearing, we will post on the City of Salem's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Persons requiring auxiliary aids and services for effective communication such as sign language interpreter and assistive listening device or print material at digital format, or reasonable modification in program, services, policies, or activities may contact the City of Salem ADA Coordinator at 978-619-5630 as soon as possible and no less than two business days before the meeting program or event. Notice that this meeting was posted on May 2nd, 2022 at 3:03 PM. This meeting is being recorded. Absent from the committee are none. We have a full committee this evening. Thank you, everyone, for joining. Also, in attendance from the Committee of the Whole, we have Counselor Merkel, Counselor Hopworth, and Counselor Marcelo. Also in attendance from the City of Salem, we have Beth Renard and Esmeralda Dastino. Thank you for joining. And we also, hopefully for the second agenda item, we might be having members of the PD joining as well. On tonight's agenda, we have the zoning ordinance relative to green infrastructure, as well as the zoning ordinance relative to visibility at intersections. So I think with the way the attendance is, we can keep the agenda as if. And we will move, actually, is Casey here yet? Cassie here yet? She is not.
No, and she had the, did she send you the most recent revise that she and I worked on yesterday?
Yes, she did.
Okay, because she didn't send it to me, so I was gonna panic here.
She did, and it was, it was, okay, she did send a message that she's coming. My computer is slow. For all of members and for the Committee of the Whole, we do have the documents that Cassie shared in our OneDrive folder. So everyone, and I actually emailed them out earlier as well. Beth, I'll forward them to you as well right now. But there, once Cassie gets on, I believe there are going to be two alternatives or two kind of solutions to our conversation from the last meeting. And we can review the red lines again that we went over at the last meeting. I'll just give Cassie a minute to join. Hi, Cassie, are you online? No pressure.
Apologies for my tardiness. This computer is, doesn't like to play nice or fast.
Same. No worries. The timing was good, actually. I just finished the long spiel that I have to do at the beginning of all meetings. Did attendance, and we went over the agenda for tonight. So you're actually first up. And I noticed that you did send us the, you sent us three documents earlier today that I dropped in our folder. One of them contains the two options. And the other one was the most current red line version that we have in front of us. I think maybe it might be a good idea to go over the, I liked the two options that you sent out to us for those, how those are kind of spelt out. If you don't mind sharing that. If you, if you can't share that, I can share that as well. Just let me know.
I can share, I just need to turn my video off. Alrighty, so do I need to zoom in any, or can everybody see it adequately?
I think that's good. I can see if everyone else see, okay?
Yes.
A little bigger might help, just if it's possible. Sorry.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the, the first option that seemed kind of the easiest one to do was to just consider a municipal exemption for any solar projects that the, the city might want to pursue. And in the use table that already exists in the zoning code or in the zoning ordinance, that exists municipal uses and are exempted. They can kind of go wherever they would like. And in talking with Tom St. Pierre, the zoning officer for the city, even if it was an accessory use, it's still a municipal use. And so it's still fun, fall under that municipal exemption. So if you didn't want to touch anything else, the city would still be allowed to pursue solar wherever they wanted. And then if, in addition to that, if you would also be more comfortable, we looked at the, the canopy mounted solar energy system that, and adding that line as an accessory use to the, the use table and coming up with a definition for it, per Counselor Cohen's recommendation. And Beth and I looked at the existing uses of the use table to see how it might fit and still remain within the four corners of the legal ad. And we felt that as an accessory use, because the intent was it, the intent for it was to kind of be parking structure related, that if you kind of neared the, the permissions of private parking and accessory structures, that you kind of be in the, the four corners of the existing legal ad and still be able to clarify that solar could go on top of those and, and be okay. And then we drafted a solar energy system canopy mounted definition. It, you know, there's no, there's no state example of this. I couldn't find one. So this is just a definition that we just kind of crafted. So open to modifications or additions to that definition if you guys see fit.
So if I could add, Counselor Ricardi? So what we did is if you look at section, if you look at table 3.2.4, which is referenced in the definition, that defines where and how you can have accessory structures. So we just took the yeses and the noes and the special permits and copied that into this so that, because they're already allowed, accessory structures are already allowed in RC through B1, not allowed in the business districts in vice special permit, the planning board and industrial. So I felt that that would be within the four corners because accessory structures are already allowed in certain districts. So that's why that is there.
I'm gonna start off with a question on this. Thank you for presenting this pretty clearly. For option two, in regards to what you just said, an accessory use, canopy mount, so the, the way that I see the accessory use of canopy mounted solar energy, that seems a very specific canopy mounted solar energy, whereas all of the conversations we've been having noted that the structures that we're mostly concerned with are ones that go, they're really technically ground mounted energy, so, or systems. So does adding that no in the business district for these canopy mounted solar energy systems exclude parking? Which would, like, I feel like they kind of both fall within two definitions now. Does parking lot, I don't know if you have any comments on that? Like, does it, is it counterintuitive? Is it, one strikes out the other?
It's a good question. So I think we're looking at it as a new canopy. So we might need to tweak that definition a little bit. So this envisions a canopy over a parking lot, for example. So maybe we need to, and a roof mounted might just be on an existing garage, right? So I think we might need to tweak that of just, just a bit. What do you think, Cassie?
Yeah, like, like I said, this was just kind of, we kind of made this up based on the initial conversations that we heard. And, and then we presented it, and then I presented it to Beth, and we kind of fit it in here based on this private garages and accessory structures. So yes, the, the definition might need to be tweaked a little bit.
Yeah, so it creates a roof over a space such as a parking lot. So it's creating a new roof system, not an existing roof on which you would mount a solar energy panel.
Correct.
Yes, but previously we were saying they were ground mounted as well. Falls into that, right? I guess my, my question is more so, I don't understand the, the, the need for that in this regard since ground mounted is already, like, are we gonna then adjust the, the zoning table for ground mounted to noes for accessory use? And that's why we have the, this new definition? I don't know, maybe I'm missing a, a piece there. Like, what, what is this new definition in accessory use solving?
It's solving the problem of creating a canopy, a structure.
Right.
A building, essentially. A carport of, of types, right? Rather than a group of panels that are affixed to the ground that are, that are low lying. That's how I understood it. Counselor Cohen, has his hand raised, maybe he can educate us a little bit more about that.
Counselor Cohen, did you have any comments on that?
Thank you, Chair. And first, I want to thank Beth and Cassie. I met with Cassie at length, and she met with Beth. So if everyone remembers, my objection to the way it was before is I felt like the previous language and zoning table did not enable canopy solar on parking lots. So the only reason that I had asked for, which I had done, I had asked for a definition with canopy mounted solar that would be included in the zoning table. So I'm very excited because I think this addresses the concerns that I had, and this will enable us to move forward if we, because this is really the only way that we can get to where we need to be. But I'm going to make a suggestion. I'm going to move that in the description below that we eliminate such as a parking lot. It must be a parking lot, because that's what this definition is for. So the canopy ground mounted solar would only be for parking lots. So I would just say creates a roof over a parking lot.
And suggest a friendly amendment to that, over an existing parking lot?
Over an existing parking lot. And then I would actually think that if we go up to the actual accessory use with the new definition, then we could make it wise all the way across. Because we have parking lots, city parking lots throughout the city in every, in every zone. So I would move to do that. I would move to change all the ends to whys, because this is only going to limit this accessory use to existing parking lots. The other thing is, based on what Tom has told Cassie, if indeed municipal properties, solar is allowed, then I don't actually feel like we need to have something in an ordinance.
May I respond to that, Counselor?
Please.
So if I own a residential three family with a parking lot, the way it was drafted, was drafted, I would be allowed to put a canopy with solar on it over my parking by a parking lot, in a warehouse, for example. Do we not want that?
No, we want that. I mean, so that's actually more common than ground mounted solar in people's yards.
Right.
That people have a driveway and they, if they already have a carport, that's already addressed in the roof mounted solar. That's already addressed in the ordinance. So you don't have to worry about that. But if they wanted to create a carport, that the roof would be solar panels, they could do that.
Well, it's not allowed right now in a B2, B4, B5, and BPD, because it's an accessory dwelling, not dwelling, an accessory structure. So if we allow-
But a driveway is not a parking lot. So that wouldn't, this new accessory use would not affect that. The driveway is not a parking lot.
Right, but if you look at section 3.2.4, it talks for accessory structures in these zones. So a canopy, in my opinion, is an accessory structure, is it not?
Yes, but, but the definition says an existing parking lot.
Beth, are you talking about the definition of accessory structure in the other part of our, or?
I am, yeah. So I'm talking about this being outside the four corners potentially, if we change this to all yeses. So, so I-
Okay, then, then I'll, I'll withdraw that part. So my motion will be to change the wording, the way, to existing parking lot. And that would leave the zoning table the way Beth and Cassie set it up.
Yeah, I, I don't want to be argumentative. Do you follow where I'm, what I'm saying?
I'm, I'm fine with that, because my, my intent in the last meeting was to create this definition that would enable, you know, specifically large park, parking lots to have canopy solar. So I'm not that really concerned about, you know, there's not a lot of multifamilies or other, that are putting canopies on their property at all.
In, in business districts specifically too. Counselor Verella, do you have a comment?
I would just like to second Counselor Cohen's question.
Thank you. So just to kind of, to kind of recap the two options that we have in front of us. So option one is that it covers the municipal concerns that we had. So we had concerns if the high school wanted to put solar canopy arrays in their parking lot, or Bentley, or a school, or a public area wanted to put them. Option one is basically stating we don't have to be concerned about it because there's a municipal exemption. If they wanted to put solar arrays in there, they could put solar arrays in there. Option two is, we obviously still have that municipal exemption, but then it takes it a step further, that if a property is not a municipal exemption and wanted to put canopy mounted solar energy into their, onto their property as an accessory use, this also allows them to do that with this new definition in those, in the, basically in the residential zones.
Yes.
Am I understanding correctly? Okay. Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Ricardi. Yeah, just to clarify, for example, Crosby's parking lot, or, you know, you know, we have a lot of parking lots that could accommodate solar that are not necessarily school owned properties. And, you know, throughout the country, a lot of, you know, mall and shopping center parking lots have canopy solar on.
Yes, I am not sure what zone Crosby's would fall into as an example. But I think, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go back to my original question. How does it, so are we essentially saying that ground mounted, small scale ground mounted is no longer that canopy is, and canopy over parking lot is not also ground mounted?
I think that because the, the way that the industry kind of defines ground mounted and the way that the planning department and the, the building department might define ground mounted are different. The point of this definition was to help clarify between the two for these types of structures. Whereas, you know, I would see whether it was, kind of going back to the conversation we had last week, whether it was built specifically to hold the solar, or it wasn't. If the solar is the roof, in my opinion, it's roof mounted solar. But Jeff and I also discussed this at length, and we've kind of felt like this definition helped create the Venn diagram of the two, and put these right in the middle to kind of help everybody understand what we were talking about.
Do we have any other comments on this piece specifically? Counselor Verella?
Counselor Ricardi, I just wanted to, I know we brought up Crosby's real quick about the accessory use of a canopy mounted solar. They are located in the B4, I believe. So that was the deal, then that would be a no, correct?
Correct.
Would they fall under ground mounted, though?
If they were doing the carport type structure, maybe like attach, like on the rows close to the building around the perimeter of their site or whatnot, it would be considered a canopy mounted with this definition. It's an existing parking lot that they're putting a roof structure over. So this definition and this row to the use table at Crosby's, no, it would not be permitted.
So we would have to make an amendment. But I understand why we, we can't do the amendment here, but we could do a second step of amending with another joint public hearing. Counselor Verella?
Thank you, Chair Ricardi. Another question through you, Beth, Beth. Would it be outside the four corners if it was, went to planning board for review instead of a no or yes?
Yes, because it wasn't contemplated. So the purpose of, you'd have to re-advertise and have a new public hearing, because the purpose of the public hearing is to give anyone who would, who would be concerned with this an opportunity to weigh in at the public hearing, right? So if I knew, and I live next to Crosby's, and I knew they could, they could go to the planning board and get a large canopy over their parking lot, and I live right next door, and I looked at the, so, oh, well, they, they can't do that, that isn't covered here. That would be a concern. It would be a way to invalidate the ordinance. Would somebody challenge it? Who knows? I'm not sure. But it's always a risk. And I, I would recommend that if that's something you'd want to do, I mean, you really, you need to take a look at that and what that might look like and how you would want that to play in with the entrance corridor overlay districts. And there's a lot to think, to think about when you're looking at big canopies over commercial parking lots.
I'll just add to that, if I may, that if you did want to consider it for commercial properties or even going with option two, the way that it is here, that maybe we start with option one and evaluate it at like the municipal level. And if there is, becomes either a demand, we start hearing inquiries from businesses, come back and look at and further investigate and research more, the canopy mounted systems and that definition, and an amendment for businesses slightly later, when maybe we're not under such a time crunch. Just an option, not saying you have to do it.
Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Ricardi. Two things briefly. One, the intent of this ordinance was a reaction to the solar farm that was gonna be on Swamp Scott Road, and I think this ordinance addresses that. My concern was, you know, eliminating uses that we'd want. So I'm actually okay with moving this forward as is. I don't believe any of the major supermarkets, for example, have come to the city and asked if they could do canopies, unfortunately. But I do have a question before other people chime in or we, we vote on this to either Beth or Cassie. And that is the commercial use, large scale ground mount solar energy system. So let's say Crosby's wanted to do a solar canopy over their parking lot. Would they be able to, if the parking lot was not, or, or would they be unable to under this zoning because the accessory used to be the solar?
So the, the, Tom and I also talked a little bit about kind of that clarification between ground mounted and roof mounted, and probably gonna get to this in a very roundabout way of answering your question. So stick with me, that he was a little bit more in my camp of, if it's a structure and you're putting solar on top of it, it's more roof mounted solar. Not necessarily ground mounted, just form over function a little bit there. And so if Market Basket wanted to come in and put a large solar canopy in, we would look at it a little bit, probably more from the, the roof mounted than, than ground mounted potentially. So it wouldn't fall under large scale ground mounted. They'd probably still have to go to planning board because it is such a large structure that they might have to go through site plan review, potentially, for that. Anyway. I don't know if that throws a big wrench in everything. I apologize if it does. It's not a thing I tend to do.
Cassie, I'm wondering if we could go back or go to the, the red line ordinance that we have so we can see these edits as a whole within the other edits that we have. If you're in the shared one, I just-
I have them into the red line or into this, because they didn't want to create confusion if we put them in there. So I can copy paste that over here really quickly, if you'd like. So I can copy paste that over here really quickly if you'd like.
Yep, I just started doing it actually in the shared document. I don't know if you have that one. I'll stop this. It looks like it's one of the same.
I'm gonna stop my share for a second so I can move a little bit faster. So my share isn't maybe the same as yours?
Um, that's whatever, I haven't made any other documents. It was really just editing in the edit that you have presented because we had at our last meeting, we had other edits that I wanted to make sure that were all looked at together. Cause we did make an edit to the, to the table. Whatever document you have is fine.
I found it. Hopefully I have some. I can't edit in that document. I unfortunately can't edit in that document, so.
Okay. And this, this should be the same one, so. Yeah. I thought we had another edit on this too. Were there any other, as we all watched Cassie talk about pressure, were there any other comments or discussion items on, um, this, this zoning chart? Counselor Verella?
Thank you Chair Riccardi. I just also wanted to point out that concerning, I'm not going to keep it at one property, but if you're going to talk about Crosby's, not only are they B4, but their parking lot is R1. So again, you know, looking at what the language was before we started to rip it apart, the R1, R2 district being going to the planning board and the RC, I mean, at this point, is that reasonable? Because at this point, I think we're limiting uh, some of these parcels because of our hodgepodge of zoning. So maybe I understand why it was in there before? Just wanted to put it out there.
Well, if their parking lot is R1, then actually we're adding a yes to that. Or you just, so they would have it by right with this, right?
Correct, but then for, for, for large-mounted, large-ground-mounted solar, we decided to say no for R1, correct? From planning, planning board, the no.
Right, but in the, I believe in the Crosby example, it would be an accessory use. Or like really any existing business example. Okay, um, I think there were a few other.
Yeah, and I made edits to this and it's not here and so, but they were very simple.
Oh, it's not showing its tracks. I see, um.
Yeah, but one of them was the request for the decommissioning, um, to be complete. And so it just added it as a part of the, the structure in there at the bottom. And then there was the as-built, see, six points. No, it is in there.
Yeah, it's at the bottom. Yep.
Um, so add a decommissioning plan, including the details that are outlined in this section below, would be part of their initial site plan to show how they plan to, how they're planning for the end of life of the project all the way through.
Thank you. Can we actually, can we go from the, we'll go from the top down and just in summary of these, these strikes and these comments? Cause I think we have everything covered now if you've added that. So we have the table edits, we're changing large-scale ground-mounted solar from planning board to no. And then we're adding in the accessory use of canopy-mounted solar energy and adding in the definition of that within the four corners because that's the existing uses for accessory use in our, um, existing zoning ordinance. Any other edits or motions or comments to change this table? No, okay, moving to the next item.
Again, this was the bike parking and the EV parking that you guys moved to struck at the very first meeting on this topic.
Okay, next one.
Um, this was that little bit of language about the special permitting authority. Since we do, are retaining, uh, planning board, special permits for industrial and the canopy, this whole section is going to stay.
Okay. So we did have, did we have the, we had, um, a revision at the last meeting to the section?
Yes. It was just kind of clarifying this language. It was a little wordy and hard to read, so.
Any comments from the committee on that? Okay, next, um, scaled drawings or designs versus blueprints or drawings and the decommissioning one, we just talked about that. Any comments or questions from the committee on that one? Okay.
This is changing stabilization or revegetation to and. And then adding that, that they have to request an inspection. I know initially we did say from the building, um, department, I changed this to city because to Amanda's point, we don't necessarily know what departments capacities might be, so, at such a time when one of these would have to be decommissioned, the city can determine who is the most appropriate person to, to field that inspection.
Right, like it might go to the conservation agent if needed or the building inspector or both, who knows?
Yeah.
Okay.
This was related to the bike parking and EV charging and then renumbering of that section appropriately. Striking the EV charging and bike parking definitions because there's no language for those. Adding that canopy-mounted definition.
Beth, because we added in that word existing parking lot, do we need to add in any clarification of what existing means? Or are we good with that? No, okay.
We're good. Cassie, fix that, just put existing over in there.
You said pre-existing?
No, just as, um, over and existing. You gotta delete that, a space.
Like that?
Get rid of the, get rid of the word, the words. Is that struck already, a space?
No, yeah, get rid of the word space, delete space, over and existing parking lot.
There you go. Okay. Um, we changed the, the sizes of the square footage to make medium a little bit smaller. Large starts at a little bit bigger. And then probably the last thing that you might want to chat about this evening is this was an amendment to the definition that staff drafted for the last meeting, um, to kind of help bridge that gap on the, the canopy-style meeting, uh, systems. But since we have a separate definition for those, you might not feel that that is necessary to include anymore.
Right. Personally, I think for clarity that that doesn't need to be included anymore because it's kind of countered on the two. They, they don't jive, but I don't know how the committee has any thoughts on that.
I move we take it out.
Okay, which I don't, I think that was just an amendment, so I don't think we need to, we can just take it out. I think we'll do, it sounds like we're good to do one vote on the end of this. Okay. Counselor Cohen?
Thank you Chair Riccardi. Um, let's see if I can get it right this time. I move that we refer this ordinance as amended to the council with a positive recommendation.
May I, thank you.
You're gonna help me with that. Go ahead.
Well, let's, let's move on or vote on the amendment first, the red line.
So I move that we accept the amendments as written tonight.
Counselor Cohen moves to propose the amended version, um, with red lines as presented this evening. Um, seconded by, Counselor Verella? Any discussion? No, okay, we'll do roll call vote. Counselor Cohen?
Yeah.
Counselor Domingo?
Yes.
Counselor Presnisky?
Yes.
Counselor Verella?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. And Counselor Cohen, your second motion to recommend, uh, for first passage to the council, recommend for adoption for first passage as amended.
Exactly.
Seconded by,
Yes, correct.
Counselor Verella, any discussion? Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Domingo?
Yes.
Counselor Presnisky?
Yes.
Counselor Verella?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Okay, great. Um, thank you all. Thank you Cassie. Thank you Ismaralda for joining. We have no follow-up questions for Jenna. You could tell her that good news. And thank you Beth for your feedback on this as well. And thanks to Tom, who I know met earlier with everyone, but wasn't able to join this evening. Cassie, could I ask for you to send an email, the red line version as is, to us? Um, and then we can, I'll share it with the full council before our next, um, council meeting. Appreciate your work. Yep. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
We're, we're getting there.
Have a good night, y'all.
Thanks, you too. Okay, moving on to our second agenda item. It doesn't look like, um, we have any attendees from the police department this evening. I know that there was an accident reported on Highland Ave. So I'm assuming they are busy this evening. So I'll try to, uh, move along and I know that conversations have, um, occurred between the various members so we can pass on the, um, information that we have received or that has been received. Sorry, I wasn't expecting, let me just pull up the documents. I'll do the screen sharing on this one. So the second item this evening is visibility at intersections, zoning visibility at intersections. The order was for fairly, fairly small amendment to our existing ordinance, to amend and replace the word 25 feet with 35 feet within the, um, language in our ordinance that talks about unobstructed visibility at intersections. No sign, fence, wall, or hedge or structure or planting of more than three feet above the established street grade shall be erected, placed, or maintained within a triangular area formed by the intersection street lines and a straight line joining said street lines, a point within 35 feet distance from the point of the intersection measured along the street. So that 35, um, feet is the requested amendment. It's currently 25 feet. So this did go to a joint public hearing. I don't believe there was, I'm trying to, I don't have my notes from the, but I don't believe there's any public feedback during that or public commentary during that. It did go to the planning board and the planning board presented back their findings, which I, I had everything pulled up and then I started looking through the, uh, code of ordinance about, um, where Crosby's is located. So let me see if I can pull this back up. And I will share my screen as we can go over these items together. So first, I think, um, it might be good to, the reason why this was in committee was the recommendation after the review of the planning board. So I'll review their comments that they presented back to us. Um, there was one in favor for the amendment and seven that opposed that would recommend adoption as amended with the following comment, I'm sorry, opposed to recommend the adoption with the following comments. The amendment should conform with the existing language of the Salem Code of Ordinance as chapter four, particularly where political signs are concerned. The amendment should be compatible with section 8.2.6.1 entrance corridor overlay district fences. The amendment should provide clarity on, um, the line of measurement from where the height is measured. And the amendment should, if used, provide clarity on the definition of intersection street lines. Consider that the distance is not measured. The planning board would like to take clarification as to what Obstructions Council seeks to manage with this ordinance. So those were the comments received back from the planning board. I believe that there was some, um, or Beth, you did review these comments and provided, um, feedback from, I don't know if it was yours or, um, Mr. St. Pierre's, but we can start touching upon these items. And, um, if there are any additional comments from the committee, we can also move to have that conversation as well. I'm just kind of going to lay out the facts here first, um, or lay out the information that we have in front of us. So, uh, Mr. St. Pierre, regarding one of the items, which I think is probably the easiest, is, um, regarding the clarity of the definition of intersection street lines, Mr. St. Pierre did provide a fabulous, um, drawing for us, which I placed in the, in the folder as well, if anybody wanted to pull this up. But this was how, uh, or how intersection, how, how the 35 feet is, or 25 feet is currently measured. These are streets, the city council Ave and Nowhere Lands, uh, or Nowhere Lane and the sidewalk. Exhibit A, I like how he labels these. Exhibit B is the intersection of center lines. So I believe the, the street lines in the middle of the two streets. So showing where those are. And then the intersection of the street line at the corner right there. So my assumption is exhibit C is showing how he actually does the measurement. So the measurement would be, um, from the corner of the sidewalk right here to the 25 feet in each direction. And then there's kind of a, uh, like a back in geometry class. I'm not quite sure what that's called. An intersection across between the two points. So that would be how the 25 feet is measured. So really anything there over the six feet blocking, um, is, is the current, um, ordinance as it's written. If the amendment was accepted, it would basically change this 25 feet to 35 feet. So push this, this line back 10 feet on either side and then there would be, watch this, I could even do this. And there would be new dots here and new dot here and a, a new line. And it would be essentially 35 feet. So that's, I'm like, just like Tom could do. So there'd be a, that's a proposed amendment and this is the confirmation of how, um, the, the inspector, inspection department measures that. So there'd be a, that's a proposed amendment and this is the confirmation of how um the the inspector inspection department measures that. So I'm also going to comment and Beth, if I'm speaking incorrectly, please let me know. But the other items that were reported back from the planning board, the amendment should conform with existing language in the Salem Code um of ordinance is chapter four, particularly where political signs are concerned. Um, and the response is the zoning ordinance in question relates to all obstructions at intersections. So it's not specifically related to political signs. It's called out um hedges, fences, really anything that could obstruct the line of sight. It's not um not political related. That would have to be a totally new proposal. I don't know if we want to get into that sticky situation. Somebody can if they'd like to, but this is just specifically to any sort of obstruction um that falls within that frame. Um, the other comment was the amendment should be compatible with section eight point two six, eight two six one, the entrance corridor overlay district. Um, that's outside of the four corners of this. We're really only dealing with the distance of what's currently written. Uh, the amendment about providing clarity in the line of measurement, we just went over that as to how it's how it's currently measured. Those that do the measuring understand how it's measured and feel that it's clear. Um, and again, something that's outside the four corners of this. And the last one also outside the four corners, the the clarity of the definition of the intersection of street um lines. That would have to be a new public posting because it would, none of that was um discussed or presented during the joint public hearing. If somebody is concerned or confused about how it needs to be measured and feels that the ordinance needs to be updated to include that language, that can be done. But right now, those that are doing the inspection and the measuring understand how it's measured and can adequately explain it to residents and counselors in the drawing. Um. I think that, I think did I, did I cover them all? Um, I with that, I'm gonna open it up to the committee and the committee of the whole to see if there are any. Um, I know Counselor Mercil is the one that uh submitted this request as well. If you have anything you'd like to add. Counselor Mercil?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so we did have a meeting this morning. Um, myself and and Beth and um Tom St. Pierre. And Tom did relay, luckily, he did relay that the police department does feel that the twenty five feet is sufficient. Um. You know, I brought this because I did have a constituent who had a near accident at this intersection. Um, and I will, I will say this because I can never say it enough in this city or elsewhere. Is that when drivers come into intersections, they need to slow down and look both ways. Um, this intersection is clearly no different than any other. Um, you can't assume that someone that there, that someone is is going to um you can't assume that the intersection is going to be clear, that someone isn't going to run a red light. Um, and so I think that's that that's the bottom line always when we're driving. Um, so, but I I still would like to have this discussion about visibility. Um, it when when the issue with this um this particular intersection and the the signs that were obstructing the view um when this was happening last summer, um we, I was out there with the chief of police and we were looking at, you know, cars going by and looking through as you approach that intersection. And I mean, there's a case to be made that twenty five feet isn't isn't enough. Is thirty feet better? I mean, yes, thirty feet's better. Thirty five feet feet is better. Um. I I will say, so the police department feels that twenty five feet is sufficient and therefore, you know, Mr. St. Pierre is is he thinks that that's sufficient, but he also said that he doesn't make the rules and that it's up to the council to have the conversation about visibility issues. So um, so yeah, I I think Beth, did I capture enough of of what their their feeling was? Okay. Since since um the police department wasn't able to be here to express their point of view, I want to make sure that everyone is is up to date on on their viewpoint at this right now. So I would love to hear people's um feedback on this. Uh, discussion of of the change or not to change it, either way.
Thank you. Counselor Varela, you had your hand up first?
Thank you Chair Riccardi. Um, so yeah, I I really believe that changing it from twenty five feet to thirty five feet seems fairly reasonable. Um, all of our intersections here in Salem are not a one size fits all. Some intersections uh are more dangerous than others depending on visibility. And I really believe uh extending the uh the frontage from twenty five to thirty five uh is fairly reasonable. And an obstruction is an obstruction and whether it be a fence, hedge, a sign, you know, whatever we can do to increase the visibility for our drivers in our intersections, I think is a benefit. We're a growing city and these are things we have to um figure out and accommodate. Thank you.
Counselor Merkel?
Thank you Chair Riccardi, not being a member of the committee. I also still support uh the uh extension of thirty five feet restriction as well. It's not always a matter of only blocking the view. Signs are distracting. You know, they catch your eye. They catch your attention. Um, and so I think that's a factor along with just, you know, not being able to see well. It it can, it just, it's it's a distraction, especially a lot of times they they can be bright and colorful. It's like, oh, you know, it just kind of kind of catches your eye. And that can be enough uh i- in my opinion uh to to add, you know, uh to be a a safety factor as well. I mean, anything we can do uh that will help, e- even if it's a small amount helps. Uh, there's, you know, we all know there's a lot of speed, more and more speeding issues. And I still support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree on on protecting residents in the view. But I also wanted to express some concern on not to be too aggressively. We hear comments that we are a growing city. We do. We need to make sure that we accommodate and we make sure that everything is on place. We hear from the expert, police department saying that twenty five feet is enough. It's it's viewable. If we try to be too hard on one side and another, what we are, we are violating. Some people write on a way that trying to do too much sometimes not that good. So let's let's go with the expert recommendation. And also let's see how legally can we, as a, as a government, can we mandate on private property? When when we see that it's no cases, nothing is going to be happening. Why we had to go farther to the limits? If we say that twenty five feet is enough is viewable, it's protecting people life, which is I am completely in full agreement. Why we had to go farther, just to to maybe to a point that we are a city that we have everything under control. A grow community is one that uh is in the middle to give everybody opportunity to grow, to give everybody opportunity to do. I don't think that if I own a house near twenty intersection that I would feel so happy that I cannot put a sign on my property because uh city government say that it is, it is up to certain amount of feet. When the expert already said that twenty five feet is okay. Let's go case by case. There is a case where we need to do more than that. Let's do it. Why not? Protecting people life is very important. But let's also be very careful on not to be a type of government to mandate people life because this is uh, this is going to create an issue. And I want to ask a question to you, Madam, Madam Chair, to the city solicitor. Uh, do you have any incident where any private owner might create a legal case to the city? When they feel that the rights are reviolated? Do you have any 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 experience on that or or that's something that we need to look at from the legal aspect?
Well, you know, there are always cases when, and and not not cases like this, but other cases when we've tried to rezone uh properties of, you know, we have more of those uh types of cases where people are aggrieved. Um, you know, the police and the building inspector um was concerned that, you know, there are lots in Salem that are that are small. And so now you have people that have um fences, uh they're already existing. Um, you know, fencing in their backyards and they may be um within the thirty feet of of the street, uh the corner. And so what does that mean to them with respect to those fences that are already existing? So um the building inspector was concerned because of the of the small lot sizes we find throughout the city. Um, that thirty five feet might be um problematic to a lot of folks. Uh, I think that's what he was expressing this morning uh about that. And in his opinion, he, you know, when he has gone out and measured those corners, he hasn't found any um where twenty five feet isn't enough for someone to see around the corner if a car is coming. Um, and he was concerned about existing fences for um for backyards and and hedges that are already existing and those types of things.
That answer your question, Counselor Dominguez?
Yes, it does answer my question and I just wanted to add a little bit more on on my comments that let's uh, is there any way we can go case by case instead of this set a measurement? That is not really mandated by the expert at this moment. And let's say, okay, we find some property that really, or any intersection that really need more than twenty five feet, what is required. Can we be flexible enough to 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 allow that property to have thirty five feet instead of twenty five?
Counselor Dominguez, my question to you would be, are you requesting um additional language to add in a case by case basis or a city process to add in a case by case basis for basis?
That the city add case by case in the language.
Into the language. And how would you propose that case by case basis? So do you have any?
That is uh uh my my, I don't know, I don't, I'm not an expert, just maybe to to draw an audience, but my my suggestion is to adding the language that leave up to the city inspector to uh mandate or allow the appropriate owner to 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 have thirty five feet instead of twenty five, if the if the expert uh see that is necessary.
Thank you. Um. Think uh, trying to see whose hands are up first. I'm sorry. Counselor Varela?
Thank you Chair Riccardi. Through you to C S listener Renner. Uh, concerning if we do change this ordinance uh and people that are within twenty five feet um of a hedge or fence. Does that now become a nonconforming use? I mean, we're not, they don't have to take them down, correct? This is just reconstruction, correct? Okay, thank you. I I don't see a problem with this because of that. Uh, you know, this will not change. It'll just be a nonconforming use for people that are outside the bounds of the
Thank you. Can I just repeat that? I want to make sure I heard, I was reading something. So it doesn't, it it exist, if an existing fence is within twenty five feet, we're not going to then go back and say, hey, you have to take it down and that'd be thirty five feet. But if somebody pulls a permit to pull one, the process would have to be thirty five feet.
Right, or if someone has a hedge that now grows, you know, have a small hedge and now grows. Um, you know, it's not a preexisting, it's not conforming if it's already exists right this minute.
No, thank you. What about, can I add on to that? What about temporary? Because this all comes from signs that were posted at the corner of Highland Ave and that's a temporary item. So if they're not there now and then they're, so that would not be preexisting, correct? Because they come up down and go back up? Okay, thank you. Um, the next hand, I believe, is Counselor Mercilow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to circle back to what Counselor Dominguez was talking about, where the the um the inspector can go out and measure and maybe determine at a particular intersection that the dimension needs to be larger than what's stated in the ordinance. I think in this particular instance with signs, that would be difficult for them to do because it it would not be grounded in the ordinance. The ordinance is twenty five or or X, whatever X is. They can't go out and change that. Um, so I want to be careful thinking that we give the inspector any sort of any sort of superpowers outside of the wording in the ordinance um that they, especially when it comes to political signs, they would not feel comfortable enforcing that or changing the dimension outside of what's written in the ordinance. Um, so I I want to make sure and and Beth, do you, am I saying that correctly? Do you agree with that?
Hundred percent.
Yep.
Agreed. Counselor Cohen?
Thank you Chair Riccardi. Um, I kind of want to follow up on what Counselor Mercilos said. Um, I'm somewhat indifferent about the dimension because um I'm of the opinion that twenty five feet was probably an arbitrary number at some point anyway. But my concern is, having worked for the city, I'm trying to be respective of the workload. Um, and I'm not just talking about now, because now we're short staffed because of the, you know, unemployment situation. But in general, we we run a pretty lean city um staff and the idea that the building department would have people who could just drive around and identify things. I think is really at a cost that may not make sense for the priorities for the city. I just think it's, it's a lot to ask a building department that only has a handful of people to, you know, that is pretty busy. Um, to be driving around looking for things that they could address. And so I also think that case by case is really a difficult thing to enforce. Because what does that mean? Does that mean that someone has to call the city? This, you know, what does that mean? So I just feel like you know, we need to be somewhat respective of the ability for our city employees to be able to do the work that we have assigned to them. Just because we write an ordinance doesn't mean they can fulfill every task that we give them.
Thank you. Counselor Presnisky? You're on mute, Counselor. Counselor, you're on mute.
I'm sorry. I was, apologize. I was saying just, let's just get the all of this out in plain English and let's get to the elephant in the room and let's just spill our beans and and what we got to say on this. The reason that we, that this is being brought up is that because some of the political signs by by some of us and some of the people that have uh run before have been putting up signs that have been blocking some of the intersections and causing a distraction. Um, and maybe a safety concern at different intersections. Um, the size of the signs, that's something that we should be talking about, maybe as a city council. The length of the time that our signs can be displayed, should we start start now for next year? I mean, that's something that maybe we should be talking about. It's not so much the distances, it's the safety issue that's involved here. And it's not the building inspector who determines whether something is 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 a public safety issue. I think that belongs to the public safety officials, like the the police and the fire department and probably more the police. Our city is built within intersections and not, they're not all ninety degrees. There, there's many of them in many different configurations. Um, some of those intersections have uh private property that have fences that block the view regardless whether there's a, there's a sign or not. Um, so it's, it's not so much the signage as it is the safety part about taking a look at the intersection and seeing whether or not traffic can flow uh without, without it being a safety issue. So it, I I think this may be a little bit of a further discussion on on the size of the signs, the the times that the signs can be put up rather rather than how far from the intersection a sign can be. Twenty five feet is a pretty considerable distance. Unless you're doing sixty miles an hour entering an intersection, twenty five feet when you enter an intersection, you should be able to see around, see around that. If not, if it's in such a place where you have to creep up to an intersection and you're being blocked by a sign that was put there by uh a temporary sign that was put there, not by a fence or a hedge or something else that the landowner, right? But then that's a safety issue that should be uh brought to the attention of the public safety people. But um I I just think it needs a little bit further discussion, discussion on this. I I understand the root of the problem and why we're talking about this. Um, and and it's, it's for good reason. And I I agree, there may be a public safety uh issue involved in some of the placement There may be a public safety issue involved in some of the placement of some of the signs. But it's it's it shouldn't be, we shouldn't spread it all out by saying all intersections, twenty five feet, thirty five feet, whatever it is. It should be the size of the sign, the time of the sign, and it should be, if it's a nuisance, then it should be addressed by public safety. I got that off my chest, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Hepworth?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and not being a member of the committee. This does dovetail a little bit with what we're talking about, government services tomorrow night around pedestrian safety and just safety on the roads in general. And I hope that as a as a city, we're moving to a place where we're not accepting any safety issues or any any pedestrian deaths or or driver deaths or injuries on the roads as any sort of a price that that we pay for for whatever it is. And I think that I'm I'm not certain that thirty five is any different than twenty five. And I guess I would, I'm happy to, I'm happy to support it. And I think that if that if it's going to make our streets safer, I don't think that giving the building inspector any sort of authority or anybody authority to to decide on a case by case basis. I just don't know how we we operate under that. And I think it's also operating under a very reactive mode where they determine it's a safety issue because somebody got hurt there. And we we as a as a city, we need to move away, and as a country, we need to move away from reacting to safety issues after the fact and 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 dealing with issues after somebody's been hurt. We just had two accidents or one accident today that that sounds like it was pretty bad down on Highland Avenue. There's 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 a lot of work that we need to do as a community. I may have missed it earlier, but was there feedback from police and fires to why they felt that this that twenty five was sufficient? I don't know if I missed that or if that or or what that feedback was. And I guess I would be inclined to agree with Councilor Cohen that I don't, to me, twenty five seems also arbitrary. I don't know what what it's based on. It may well be based on something, I'm just not sure what it is.
Thank you, Councilor. I'll paraphrase slightly from what I heard was the twenty five feet is what it is and has been somewhat working except for perhaps a few key intersections, as well as they felt the twenty five feet might be too restrictive on some lots within our city. I don't know if it was the police that said that or if it was Tom that said that. I will I will add some of my own comments after listening to the first pass round for everyone here. I did a quick Google search because that's what we do, and we're not quite sure as to what is the common rule of thumb and who are the specialists that determine this. And it seems to range between twenty five and thirty five feet. The most common seems, from what the top hits on Google seem to be thirty five feet. The city of Phoenix actually has a really great reference material about visibility and landscaping and how that measurement occurs. So it's basically Tom's sketch that we just saw. There's a nice document there. Some are a lot even more restrictive that I found out shrubs can't be more than two feet tall and thirty five feet. Specifically thinking back to the intersection at Highland Ave that has temporary political signs going back to the the crux of this. Yes, you might not, you might be able to stop, you know, trying to look both ways, but people travel very fast on Highland Ave, and that's not a clear line of sight. And you might not see, like, if that extra ten feet or twenty five to thirty five gives you an additional second to help, you know, somebody blowing a red light or speeding down there is not going to take pause. And if that additional sightline can help someone and make it slightly more safe for them, then I think that we should be doing what we can do to make that safer. The the comments regarding putting it on us or putting putting on us onto the property, onto the building inspector or onto the police department, I think is very that's not, you can't put that on onto them, especially when it comes to a political sign. That's that's not fair, and that's just, that's just not fair. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that or suggest that. And I can't think of, you know, and when it comes to political, I can't think of a fair body to put that on. So I don't think that that would be a reasonable suggestion. In regards to the the crux of it, as Councilor Proznuski very eloquently spread it out or laid it out on the table for us, I think that that's a much larger nut that is very complicated and not something that is definitely outside of the four corners of what we're talking about this evening. It's outside of the four corners of what the joint public hearing is. I think what's in front of us right now is a very simple, what are the, what can we do now to make the intersections and intersections in the city of new fences or hedges or items that are being put up? What can we do now to make them safer? And this is something that we can do now to make them safer. I, the political items, you know, I do, I would welcome that conversation if somebody wanted to propose something within all that. But there are many, many nuances to the law when it comes to, you know, freedom of speech and supporting your political partner that you want to support. I think we're all pretty aware of that. So I think that's definitely a much stickier item to to bring up, but someone can definitely bring that up. But again, I just wanted to point out that's definitely outside of the four corners of what we're discussing this evening.
Can I just add one more thing, Madam Chair? Just, I actually also did a did a Google search while 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 this was continuing here. And it does seem that other communities do, I think the ranges are just just exactly what you said, Councilor Ricciardi. But I think other communities do define their streets. I don't think we do here. They define, they define them differently and different distances. It's like, for instance, a state highway, maybe thirty five feet, but but just a typical suburban street, maybe, maybe a little bit less. So I wonder if, look, I don't know, for Beth, I don't know if that would still be within the four corners. If we, I assume it probably would be if we if we defined distances based on the type of street that that we're on.
Yes, I believe that would be within the four corners, yes. Because you reduce, are you essentially going to be reducing the number of streets where this would be applicable?
Yeah, I think that, as I mean, Councilor Dominguez mentioned, wanting to take this on a case by case basis. I think this sort of does that a little bit where it defines, you know, some streets are more dangerous than others. Highland Avenue is more dangerous than other other streets locally here. So I think that maybe maybe looking at thirty five feet for state highways might be fair, and then looking at continuing twenty five feet throughout the rest of the city, at least from my my perspective, seems like that would work.
Or perhaps the entrance corridors that are already identified in the entrance corridor overlay district?
Something like that, seems like that would make sense, too. Those are, I mean, I I guess we'll find out more tomorrow night, too, at that, at the meeting when we talk to the Chief of Police. But I think those were, the majority of our accidents have been happening is on those entrance quarters. Thank you, Mentor.
You're all moving around, so I apologize if I'm not calling on the correct order. Please correct me if I'm wrong. But Councilor Cohen, you're at the top of my screen for Andrea.
Councilor Dominguez was before me.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Dominguez?
Madam Chair, thank you, Councilor Cohen, for recognizing that I was fair. I understand that sometimes it's difficult to find out who's right there and need technology. I hope you can hear me well. I have to agree with Councilor Proznuski comments, and he's nailed it, he said the way the way it is. I think that we need to be more open and sorry when we have things in front of us. It's not a secret that my campaign is one of the most visible one throughout the year. Bigger signs maybe that you haven't seen before. And I want to say this very carefully because I want to make sure that it's been understood. I think that we need to deeply discuss this in a very deeply way. Because I don't want, I don't want to get the wrong message that many people already started to comment about it. Democracy is equal for everybody. Freedom of speech need to be very well maintained. And sometimes that, when we try to 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 fit something, maybe what we create is another issue. That's why in my comment, I said previously, we need to make sure that we really come out with something that really fit everyone and is legally well done in a way that private sector, people who pay taxes, people who are residents, people who have will and have way to say thing, her, their rights cannot be destroyed by us trying to fit something. I understand that we need to address the public safety issue, which is tremendous necessary. But I think that we need to be very careful. By suppressing or by by suggesting that we need to do certain thing coming from the government, to the residents, to private owner people or to any other campaign, because we we don't agree with what is we're seeing, is going to create an issue. I hear that in some other communities, where that happened, people start to complaining, and we can create social social component that we don't want to see here in the same. We are a growing population, and I think that we, everybody's inclusive here. Let's make sure that we discuss this issue very clear. Let's make sure that we bring something that really everybody agree with. Do not try to, we we as a government, don't don't try to regulate something that is, this might be very in line on the on the on the freedom of speech, political regulation that we see throughout the 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 whole United States, just because we feel that we have to maintain some some type of a community. This is a community for all, and I think everybody had the right, especially the private taxpayer who own the houses. They, I I don't think that anyone can mandate, how can you, what can you put in front of your house in in terms of of what side can you put in when when they wanted to do it? So I want to make sure that this discussion become more deeply. I wanted to understand more exactly what what is what is the deal. I hear a lot of comments throughout the campaign. I hear so many things that happen, and I want to make sure that we come out with something that is clear for everyone. Hopefully, hopefully, we all can discuss this and we can really provide answer to the general public, as they will know exactly what we're doing as a government. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Dominguez. Just to clarify, so the the one item that's in front of us tonight and the item that was the joint public hearing is revising our existing language, which talks about visibility requirements at intersections from twenty five feet measurement to thirty five feet. That's the one and only item that's in front of us this evening. We haven't had any other motions for amendments or revisions to that, not based off of other topics have been brought up and discussed, but we're not, that's not the matter necessarily in front of us tonight. So the one item that we need to report back to Council on is that edit of twenty five feet to thirty five feet. We might, you know, we could have whatever we have for a recommendation for it. But right now, just because you're asking for clarification, that's what's in front of us this evening. Okay, I think if I go to the panelist list, I can see who's handed next. Councilor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Ricciardi. Yeah, to your point, although I do agree with Councilor Proznuski that, you know, it would be up to this body to address size and length of time, whatever. That's not what we're discussing. You know, it's indifferent coming into this meeting. I do like very much the point that Councilor Hepworth said about maybe just limiting this expansion to entrance corridors. I do want to say I have a sad example personally, anecdotally. My wife and I went to an event in Lincoln where they don't allow signs on private property. And it happened to be political signs, but every medium strip, almost the entire road, were full of signs. And even though I have a really great navigation system, I missed an important turn, and it took me forever to get back. So I do feel like, you know, this is a safety issue, and if the body is willing, and and if it's something we can fit into the four corners of this ordinance, I I'd be welcoming what Councilor Hepworth said.
Thank you, Councilor Cohen. Councilor Merkel?
Thank you, Chair Ricciardi, not being a member of the committee. Yes, I I think Councilor Hepworth's point that would help address, you know, the danger might help address the the danger level of the different intersections. But I also hesitate to pass things that are complicated for our residents to to navigate. Like, I I just find sometimes when things get really complicated, they may not know, you know, if the road is designated as, you know, high highway or entrance corridor. And then I think that kind of circles back to being burdensome for our city officials that have to, you know, go around and and, you know, follow up on this and see, you know, and and regulate it. So that's just my only hesitation to not making it a little bit more straightforward with with the length.
Thank you. Councilor Verella?
Thank you, Chair Ricciardi. My intent was to make a motion, so if Councilor President Mercillo would like to speak.
Sorry, I wasn't looking, Councilor Mercillo? Did you say that?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of things. First, I want to get away from the sign line, the sign discussion here. This is about all obstructions and and intersections. It's not specific to signs, and I was, it came about because of a sign, but it could be anything. So I don't want this, I don't want the body to focus solely on signs here. And for Councilor Dominguez, I also want to make it clear to everyone who's listening to this that it was not his signs that were involved. So I also want to make that clear. This is not, no one's, I am certainly not trying to attack you or your campaign at all. And I, you know, we we spoke about this situation before, and you are very responsive, and I a hundred percent appreciate that. And then finally, about changing it to thirty five feet in the entrance corridor overlay districts, I think that's a great idea, actually. I wholeheartedly recommend that. I don't think it's too burdensome. The inspector, the police know exactly what those roads are. They're the, you know, the main, the main roads, the higher speed limits. And I think that would probably address the issues that we're seeing with with safety of cars, pedestrians, and bicyclists. So I, you know, if the, I am not a member of this body, but since I did bring in this change, I would say that I I I would appreciate that that amendment to it.
Councilor Verella?
Thank you, Chair Ricciardi. Again, I'd like to make a motion, but it seems like Councilor Proznuski has his hand up, so respectfully, that's what I'm going to say.
Madam Chair, yeah, I want to reflect on what Councilor Merkel had brought up and then Councilor Dominguez. Infringing on the rights of the residents and the and the homeowners. I'm trying to put myself in their shoes and saying, for instance, the person who owns the property in Highland and Wilson Street, let's just use that as an example. If that person wanted to put an above ground pool on their property, they would have to fence it in. And then that fence may be within, I'm not sure how the planning department or how the, how that would work. But I imagine that it would have to be, have to clear the twenty five foot zone so that it wouldn't obstruct the intersection. But thirty five feet may not allow them to do that. So, you know, we're talking about, I know that this goes back to signs, but it's a little bit of a bigger picture than that. It's the individual rights of the of the of the people who have property over there as to what they can put up and what they can't. And that extra ten feet on both sides of an intersection may make a big difference in the quality of life. I just think it's something that should be for a little bit further discussed and not 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 taking a vote on tonight.
Thank you. Councilor Verella?
Thank you, Chair Ricciardi, I'd like to make a motion to amend, so I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance to apply to entrance corridors concerning the thirty five feet. And, thank you, does that work?
Sure, yeah, I I can pull that back up and we can, we can, I think, how about step one, we'll we'll talk about what that possible amendment might be, and then step two, we can open it back up to discussion. Let me share my screen. So Beth, I have. So Beth, I have the language in front of me and I can do track changes if that works with your assistance. So, so the existing language, essentially what I'm hearing is that this would turn back to 25 feet with the existing language. But then we would add 25 feet distant. And then like comma, 35 feet in the entrance corridor? Is that, what is, is simple as that?
Yes, yep. 35 feet in the entrance corridor overlay district.
A straight line joining said street lines at points which are 25 feet. So that's reversing it back to how it's written, basically. And what the amendment now would be 35 feet for properties in the entrance corridor. So I have to say properties?
Yeah, well, lots.
Did I capture that correctly as to what everyone was thinking? Or Counselor Verella, did I capture that correctly? Okay. Is there a second on that motion? I lost my screen. You can just speak if there's a second.
I have a question.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair Cardy. And, and this may have been covered in Beth's answer to Andy. So if someone already has a fence wall hedge or other structure, does it affect them? Is this just for new?
This is new.
This is just now. Yep. Yeah, I know that was, that was brought up at the beginning. It was just new. And then my comment on that was the one if like it was temporary that's put up and then temporary taken down. So temporary could not become a permanent under the new and have to go under existing.
Thank you. I've just gotten more confused as we've talked about it.
Counselor Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I got to add and to support the comments that Counselor Proznuski just made. I'm not in favor of voting on, on any, any action at this moment. I don't know if we can have a Second Amendment motion to keep this in committee and invite the building inspector and the police and hear more from there indirectly. Any action that we need to take maybe can, can be more clear for the rest of the body. Then we can, we can move on this. So at this moment, I don't think that as, as Counselor Proznuski expressed, we're ready to have any decision. Because I feel strongly that we've in some action that we might take might intervene on some private owners in different areas. So cases might be that, like Counselor Proznuski mentioned, that we might affect the quality of life or any property on any one of those corridors. So I want to hear from the expert. More I know, I rely on, or they say we had a serious solicitor here. We hear from her on the legal aspect. Let's bring the building inspector and let's bring the police so we can hear more.
Is that a motion, Counselor?
Yeah, that is a motion, yes.
A motion is to, to keep the matter in committee?
Yes.
A second by Counselor President. Let me stop sharing my screen so I can see. One second. Was there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Second by Counselor Proznuski. So under discussion on that, let me pull up, get my notes on what the timeline is for this. And then we'll take, we'll take a look at the schedule too. So this does have first passage due on May 26th. So we have some time. We can definitely meet again. And lucky us, we have a meeting coming up May 16th that will have the police department there. So I think that's an easy add to add into that meeting and have those, those members with us. But I'd also like to ask the committee and ask those that are concerned with making amendments to this as to what additional discussion you would like to hear on this. Because I want to make sure that because this does have a timeline, we can't just, I mean, we can just keep it in committee, but we, if, if we want to move on any matter, we, I want to make sure we have the correct parties here to address any concerns or questions that you might have. Counselor Proznuski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also suggest that we have a member from the planning department come and listen to the, to the discussion and add if there's anything that they want to weigh, weigh in on. And, and maybe there may be other interested departments also, but I think planning and the police and should, should be there to talk about this.
Planning and the police, that seems good. Any other comments or questions or items from the committee to Counselor Verella?
Thank you, Chair Cardy. I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, this, this really is about, for me, it's about safety. And our overlay districts concerning just the, just our, sorry, I can't even talk right now. For entrance corridors, specifically Ward Seven, I know Highland Avenue, these are very fast streets. And this is why I really feel strongly that we need to make an action about this because, you know, it's about safety overall and within Highland Avenue, Maureen Avenue, Lafayette, you have some very fast streets and this would absolutely help the viability and safety of our intersection. So I don't think this has to be about anything else, just about safety. So we'll discourage on how this is going tonight, but we are.
Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Cardy. I agree it's about safety, but I also feel like with another meeting, we can get to a place where we could potentially have a unanimous vote. And you know, I, I have to, you know, I've said this twice now, but I came into this indifferent and now I've got a different idea and didn't really think about what Counselor Hapworth said until he brought it up. So I feel like this will give us time. We're not talking about a long time. We're just talking about getting it right. And I think that should be our, our, our focus is always to get it right.
And lucky us, we do have that meeting scheduled on the 17th with the Chief of Police and multiple representatives from the traffic department. So we have it covered already. I will add, I think from my perspective, it's, I was also a little indifferent, but the priority for me is always safety. We regulate a lot of stuff that goes on in this city. We tell homeowners what they can and cannot do a lot. So I don't think adding an additional 10 feet is an infringement on rights. That just seems like a crazy statement to me because of all of the infringements on property rights. So we, we tell people what they can do out of their home with our business, home business regulations. We tell people how high their fence can be on the entrance corridor. This is no different than that. So I don't see how this is really, you know, if somebody wants to put a pool on, they need to go in and get the permits to do that. And there are certain guidelines that need to be followed. So it's really just adding an additional guideline, which purely is for safety. And if safety is not our top priority, seeing especially the dangerous accidents that we're having right now, or again, not reframing my terminology, not accidents that we're having, but just the, the, the dangerous situations. I am forgetting the term right now, but we, we need to have our focus and, and have our priorities set straight and understand what kind of where, what our role is here. And that's very important. And I'm, I'm really glad that we have that meeting already on the books for the 17th. So I'll move to make, or not move, I'll email Maureen to ask her to edit the agenda to include this topic on there as well. After we take a vote to confirm if this can stay in committee. So we had two motions on the floor. One did not have a second. The other one did have a second to keep this matter in committee. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll go to roll call vote. Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Proznuski?
Yes.
Counselor Verella?
Oh.
And myself is a yes. So the matter passes. We'll keep it in committee for, for one. Any other comments or questions or requests for the meeting on the 17th that we will amend to include this topic? Okay, so just a reminder then, we have a couple upcoming Ola meetings. We have next Monday. I don't know if we all saw the posting for that, but Monday at six is the Bridge Street Neck overlay zoning district. I feel like I'm missing a word there. But we will have Amanda from the planning department come and present to us an abbreviated presentation. This is after the joint public hearing meeting. And then on the 17th, we will have, we have a meeting as well where the video camera usage for the police department and now zoning visibility at intersections will be added. Thinking of maybe adding public amplification, but we'll see how much we can get on to the agenda that night. Any other comments or motions? Counselor Verella?
I would let Mr. Counsel Bob McCarthy say it, but motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by?
The second.
Second by Counselor Dominguez and Counselor Cohen on the motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Proznuski? Counselor Verella?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. So we are adjourned 7:44. Good job, guys.